Okay, I'd like to call this Planning Commission work session to order for Thursday, November 7th. My name is Carl Johnson and I'm the Chairman of the Clark County Planning Commission. Before we begin tonight, I would like to announce that our Planning Commission work sessions are hybrid, both in person and via WebEx. For the virtual and in-person members of the Planning Commission and staff, please ensure that your microphones are turned off and muted unless you are speaking. There will not be any public comment during the work session, but members of the public can watch or listen. This evening's agenda is as follows. We'll start off with the Affordable Housing Code amendments and then move to the Resource and Rural District Amendment, and finally, any comments from members of the Planning Commission. With that said, I guess we can just start out with Susan Ellinger and Alicia Topper on the Affordable Housing Code amendments.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Susan Ellinger and I'm a planner with Community Planning. I'm honored to be joined today by the County Treasurer, Alicia Topper. We're here today to discuss the implementation of Strategy AH1 from the Housing Options Study and Action Plan. And we're joined today by Community Planning Director Oliver Orjiakko, Program Manager Jose Alvarez, and Interim Chief Civil Prosecuting Attorney Chris Cook. Next slide. So our agenda for today is to provide a short overview and background of how we got to this point with the housing project and outline the code modifications that we're recommending and discuss our findings and recommendations. Next slide, please. So the Clark County Housing Options Study and Action Plan, which we also refer to as the HOSAP, was adopted in May of 2022. And the HOSAP identifies housing challenges and opportunities to encourage development of housing that's affordable to a variety of household incomes. The HOSAP applies to the unincorporated Vancouver urban growth area, and that's shown on this slide. This area of the county has urban services to support various types of housing. Following adoption of the HOSAP, the County Council directed staff to begin working on modifications of, on the code to implement the plan. The first phase of implementation included code changes applicable to the middle housing and smaller, single-family developments. And those code changes were adopted on March 5th of 2024. The second phase of the project focuses mostly on multifamily and regulated affordable housing, and that's currently in process. The project that we're here to discuss with you today pulls a single strategy from the Phase 2 work for implementation now. Next slide, please. So this project focuses on HOSAP Strategy AH1, and this strategy aims to expand potential development options for affordable housing projects by allowing them to be located in the commercial and mixed-use zones. The strategy suggests that allowed residential uses should meet certain affordability criteria. And so based on the strategy language, we developed some draft code. Next slide, please. In the draft code changes, we're proposing to add language to the commercial and mixed-use zones that would allow affordable housing projects with no associated required commercial use if certain criteria are met. And those criteria are location within the Vancouver urban growth area, having the applicant provide evidence prior to certificate of occupancy of an executed long-term restrictive covenant. And the covenant ensures that the units will remain affordable for a certain number of years. And in this case, we're suggesting 30 or more years. And the third criteria is that it requires the project to meet the federal low-income housing tax credit area median, median income. And as outlined in the HOSAP, that's also known as AMI. AMI is the midpoint of a region's income distribution. Half of the families in the region earn more than the median and half earn less than the median. And these income levels are a way to assess housing affordability. I also wanted to, while we're on the code change, point out that there were a few changes to the staff report and the proposed code language since it was initially posted on the website on October 31st. For the staff report, I accidentally included the comprehensive plan change criteria rather than the code change criteria, and so I made that change in the staff report. And for the modifications to the proposed code changes, I've included hard copies that show the original proposed language and the new language. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about that. So to describe the code changes, the language has been simplified pretty significantly. We also expanded the eligibility to include financing programs other than the Washington State Housing Finance Commission and included projects that meet the low-income tax credit area median income requirements. We did this rather than referring to a specific percentage of units or a specific percentage of AMI. And in our discussion with some housing experts, the original language was very narrow and may not allow very many projects to take advantage of the code changes. So we decided to make those changes from the code that was originally posted online. Finally, we specified that the evidence showing the project meets the low-income tax credit area median income, or AMI, requirements must be done before building permit occupancy. And this is, again, to allow for closing on property and other financing to happen before that evidence has to be shown. So you might be wondering, why are we pulling out this single code change now? And there's a few answers to that question. The first is that the Phase 1 code changes required additional revisions and were delayed past the original expected implementation date. And because of that, work on Phase 2 was paused while Phase 1 was completed. We're currently working on Phase 2, but we're unsure when it will go through the review process. And so depending on the specific provisions, which may include comprehensive plan changes, we may decide to couple the Phase 2 housing code changes with the 2025 comprehensive plan periodic update. And that's anticipated to be completed in December of 2025. So I'm now going to have Alicia talk about some additional reasons for the timing of this code change.
Thank you, Susan, and good evening, Commissioners, Chair, and County Staff. It's an honor to be in front of you today. For the record, I'm Alicia Topper. I'm the Clark County Treasurer. But tonight, I'm here in front of you as a housing advocate. In 2017, I was appointed to the Washington State Housing Finance Commission, and I've served on the commission since. The commission, what I want to provide you is a little bit of background about the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. Most folks don't know what it is or how it's applied, so I'm here to provide some background and also reasoning why I'm championing this amendment and have visited with all the council members to ask them to support passing it this year with your approval. So the, the commission allocates the Federal Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program, which is the Washington's largest source of funding for affordable housing. It allows developers to raise capital for construction by selling the tax credits to investors. In exchange, the investors offset their corporate income tax and gain equity in the housing project to make it financially feasible to offer lower rents because they'll have less debt service to pay. So more affordable housing projects typically are not financially feasible without that federal backing. But they also have an added benefit because we also can use these income requirements to leverage the housing and urban development funding that the county has, as well as the housing trust fund monies that are set aside for affordable housing. So by having the requirements through the WISHFIC Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program, we're actually multiplying our money locally by getting trust fund dollars typically and other grants and awards. So really, I'm going to cut out some of this because Susan touched on it, but really what I want to say is the study identified that the unincorporated Vancouver urban growth areas' housing stock lacks diversity and in housing types, with most of those units being single-family owned. And for those that do rent, 44% spend more than 30% of their income towards housing costs per month. So by promoting the availability of land without that of commercial floor requirement, you will add inventory for that very needed affordable housing stock. The county staff did work very hard and diligently. As you know, they were just recently recognized by the governor for the good work of this study. And it's critically important that we do not leave any tools in our toolkit that could be implemented now. In order to build affordable housing, especially in the multifamily sector, it's a very lengthy process. It takes time to find the land, to get through the application process for grants in order to make it financially feasible. And by delaying a year, we're essentially delaying that needed inventory in the affordability zone. So I can answer any questions that you have from my perspective, working around multifamily housing developments. I'm also on the Commission for Vancouver Housing Authority, and I was the Chair of the Community Action Advisory Board for several years. So I have a diverse perspective, other than just the finance side, and I'd be happy to support Susan in her presentation today.
We have a few more slides. So I also wanted to note that there's another strategy in the HOSAP that considers allowing residential development for all income levels in the commercial and mixed-use zones. Strategy HO21 will remain as a part of Phase 2 and be considered with future code updates. It includes concepts such as reducing the ground floor commercial requirements, allowing for active ground floor uses like community spaces and plazas to meet the commercial requirements, and permitting alternative configurations of commercial and residential spaces. Next slide, please. So the Clark County Unified Development Code Title 40 consolidates all development-related regulations, land use, zoning, critical areas, and environmental protection code provisions. Sorry, I skipped a slide. So I'm now going to discuss some of the review process for these proposed amendments. Public involvement for this item included submitting to the Department of Commerce for a 16-day review on October 30th, issuing a SEPA determination of nonsignificance, and publishing it in the Columbia newspaper on November 6th, and publishing a legal notice for the Planning Commission hearing on November 6th. In addition, the Technical Housing Code Forum is a group of industry professionals made up of participants of the original project advisory group for the HOSAP, the Development Engineering and Advisory Board, and the Planning Commission. The forum holds public meetings and gives feedback regarding the housing code implementation. The forum has discussed all of the strategies in Phase 2, which included Strategy AH1, until it was recently identified for separate implementation. Next slide, please. So talked a little bit about Title 40 already. Title 40 is required to be consistent with the 20-year comprehensive growth management plan, and amendments to the code may respond to a substantial change in policy, better implement applicable comprehensive plan policies, or reflect changes in federal or state law. In the staff report, it is finding that the proposed changes better implement state law, including RCW 3670A 020, and the Comprehensive Plan Framework Plan Policies, countywide planning policies, housing element goals and policies, and the Clark County Code to plan for and accommodate housing affordable to all economic segments of the population. Based on these findings, staff recommends approval of proposed code changes. I'd like to note that the original staff report and proposed code changes were posted on the Planning Commission webpage on October 31st, and we've made some minor updates. Next slide, please. Regarding the review process and next steps, this project was discussed at council time on October 30th. We're holding a Planning Commission work session this evening, and a hearing with Planning Commission is scheduled on November 21st. It's tentative right now, but a county council hearing is planned in December of 2024.
And that date would be December 6th at 9:00 a.m.
Okay. So that concludes our presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any questions?
We'll go from Is that right? New mic? Jack Haroun for the record. Okay, so what is the need, I think I know the answer to this, but why commercial property versus purchasing multifamily property for multifamily housing?
Go ahead. I think the idea is I think the idea is to expand any site for affordable housing. And there are many existing commercial sites that are passed over frequently by commercial developers and have stayed vacant for a long number of years, especially in the MX zone. We've had a lot of developments where the residential portion of the MX property has been developed, and then the commercial has stayed vacant for a long time. And so we see it as an opportunity to expand the number of sites that are available for affordable housing projects and make, be affordable for them to do that development.
We passed something similar in the city of Vancouver four or five years ago, four years ago, something like that. When it was first presented to us there, it was 80% AMI. And we put a stop to that pretty quick because the city staff didn't understand the implications of what that did to our commercial land because it immediately made it all apartment land. So, so I guess, but we put, it was very strongly bracketed. The 40% seems like a pretty, 40% at 60% AMI seems to be like a pretty low threshold where we're really kind of going from a nonprofit to a for-profit model could almost work in that. And I guess my concern there is, is we lose our commercial land, which develop, which creates tax revenue, and replace it for apartment land that is a burden on the tax system. So I guess, has there been any staff analysis on that of like, how are we offsetting that? We're required, you know, our next hearing is on growth management stuff, and we're required to have a certain amount of commercial land, and then, but if that commercial land's being taken for housing, it kind of messes up some of the metrics that we're looking at?
So one of the safeguards against the description that you used of the 80% AMI for developments, making it too broad, and you'd be losing a lot of land to multifamily, is that the Washington State Housing Finance Commission's Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program requires at least a 30-year affordability covenant. So most developers that are developing, let's say they did 40% at 60, they would be likely sell that project and then turn it over so they can do other developments. And in this case, they would have to hold that property for at least 30 years. The other part of using the Low Income Housing Tax Credit is the threshold is they have a deeper affordability as well. So if it was 50% at 20, so you're going to get more income level developments by using the parameters that are proposed to you in this amendment than you would just picking a low AMI with a percentage. So this actually provides you more options. And with that 30-year covenant, you get the protections of the type of development.
Okay, I would, I would kind of want a little bit more understanding of how the Department of Commerce, because you had additionally added some additional financing terms. I guess I'm not opposed to the goal. I'm just wanting to make sure that, because I've actually worked on this code before for the city, it was just really, this seems much looser than the cities.
So I believe the cities is 60%, 40, it would be 40% of the units at 60% AMI.
Okay, I'd have to go back and like, I don't know what is, I can't remember exactly what was actually passed. What are we doing about the offset for loss of commercial and tax revenue from, from that? And how is that being calculated?
Well, you don't lose tax revenue because you have an exemption. It just gets redistributed to all of the properties because we're a budget-based system in Washington State.
Okay, well, let me rephrase this. So a single-family residence doesn't pay for itself.
Say that again?
A single-family residence doesn't pay for itself, from a, from a budgetary standpoint with the community. That the tax revenue is offset by businesses. So businesses provide more taxes than the services that receive. Residents as an individual residents, we consume more in public resources than, than the taxes that we pay for, which is why we always, it's really important to have a good business mix along with residential. Otherwise, if you're just a ton of residential, you'd be flush with cash because it doesn't work that way. So I guess my, my question is where, what happens because we're losing jobs lands, you know, when we, when we put apartments in? How are, how are we calculating for, for those, for those issues and for that loss? So it's a loss of jobs lands, it's a loss of tax revenue. And how does that mean, how does that mean recaptured?
So I'll, I'll start with a response, and then I may throw it over to Jose. So as part of the the vacant buildable lands work that we've been doing with the comprehensive plan update, we're looking at the zoning of all of the properties and the residential the options for residential development. And so I think the, the residential side is planned in that way. In the same way, we're looking at if we need jobs lands. And so I think as a part of that project, we're balancing both those. But Jose may have more to say on that.
Do you have that map? Was that in the PowerPoint? That showed the corridors where the commercial is? I just don't know if it's in the presentation. That's fine. So let's see, partly, one of the areas that's designated commercial is along the Highway 99 corridor. Right now, the zoning actually allows for freestanding multifamily as a use where some of these other areas where there's commercial. There's a requirement to have an integrated mixed use. So the commercial on the bottom and the vertical on top. So in our update for the comp plan update, we're modifying how we calculate that split and adjusting to sort of recapture any loss of commercial land based on how our assumption of that split. I'm not sure what, we could apply a similar assumption. We can see what the city of Vancouver has experienced, how much of their commercial land has been absorbed, and apply a similar assumption to try to recapture or account for that potential loss in commercial land.
Yeah, I guess, I'm there, in my opinion, there just need to be an offset somehow or captured, or an assumption based on, we're, we think we're going to lose 20 acres over the next 10 years of commercial land, then, then we need to plan for that in the new, you know, during our planning process for the urban growth boundary.
Right.
Yeah, so I, so it's the jobs portion. There, I know the reason that was presented to us in the city, the reason that they, the nonprofits wanted this was they were complaining about the cost of apartment land, and they couldn't afford apartment land. So they wanted commercial land, and then, because it's cheaper. So that's kind of, I guess.
Which tells you something about commercial land, right? Because in my
It tells you something about how expensive, how, what, what shortage of apartment land that we have, that the price, the price of apartment land has gotten so expensive.
And the lack of supply because we have a dearth of.
Yeah, we have, we have a shortage of, right. So, but I was just trying to like, really balance the, the jobs, the tax, and the need for affordable housing. So again, I don't want to become crosshairs harsh. I'm just trying to be technical, I guess. Because I am, you know, generally supportive of this kind of thing. So I think that's, that's probably my, my biggest concerns. Did this include industrial in this, or is this just commercial? Okay.
Commercial and mixed use.
Thank you.
Acres or parcels, do you estimate are being affected by this?
That's a great question. We can answer that for you maybe at the hearing. I don't have a number of acres right now. We do have the map that Alicia had GIS produce, shown on the screen. And
Is, is the red on the map, the properties that are potentially vacant right now and, and, and that could be redeveloped?
No. I'm going to let Alicia answer that since she
Yeah, GIS created an overlay of their urban growth area, and they showed all of the commercial and mixed-use zoned area. So it's basically just showing you where those lands are located.
Got it. Yeah. And maybe to Jack's point, if we knew the amount of acreages or lots that are affected, it would be easy to figure out what that offset would be and just how big of a change that you're, that we're talking about. Yeah, thanks.
We can, yeah, we'll come back to the hearing with a number of acres.
Just a, yeah, a general idea. We know that some of it can never be developed, and, and others, like you said, are just sitting there because they're not going to get redeveloped because the commercial industry has changed.
Yeah.
Thanks. Eldon, anything?
Just a couple. It says it'd be restricted covenant for a period of at least 30 years. Why 30 years?
Federal requirements.
Okay.
The feds.
So is there any out? Let's say after 18 years, I don't know, drastic things have changed. Does the applicant have any out?
Not that I'm aware of. I can double check with the commission and make sure Susan has that at the hearing. But I don't believe so. Yeah, the longevity of the affordability is really the goal.
Okay, I'm just saying because things can happen.
Yeah.
And is there any out? No. Okay, thank you.
Jeremy, you got anything?
Yeah, this is Jeremy Baker. So I, I'm in line with what Jack is, so I'm interested in understanding the assumptions of how much, so one, the question is how many, how much acreage is, is available for this? And then what is the assumption that will be utilized? Because I have additional questions with like the, the growth management, comprehensive plan, and understanding, because employment land is one of my, my biggest concerns, that we have the right type of employment land. So I'm with Jack with understanding what, what this code adjustment would do for one, for what's the benefits with the, the housing? Like, how much, how many people would actually use this if we changed the code? And then what, what did do to our employment land? And how is that going to be offset? So that, if I can just get some more details on that, that would be wonderful.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll come back with more details on the number of acres of the different types of properties. I don't know if we're going to be able to provide too much information on how many people would use it, just because we can tell you how many projects we've had in the past. In the future, I don't know if we're going to have any statistics.
Right, so historically, historically, so what, how is, Jack has mentioned that Vancouver has a similar type code. How has Vancouver used that? And then maybe we can extrapolate on how the, the UGA might do that in, with the same type of code. That would be helpful.
Mark? No questions.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you all for your service as well. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
One more, wait, one more. Could you provide with, for us, just One more, wait, one more. Could you provide with it for us? Just, um, I guess for the record, the, um, the, uh, what is, sorry, getting old here. Um, the, the Washington state financial, uh, state, um, finance commission, um, housing tax credit. If you could provide us the, um, the actual text of what their requirements are. I'm sure it's a book like.
Yeah.
Link would be great.
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you a link. There's the 4% and the 9% credit. But if, yeah, if you need some nighttime sleeping reading, you got it.
It's there. Yeah.
I'll send it your way, Jack.
Thanks. Thank you again.
Okay. Uh, with that said, um, we move on to resource and rural districts. Bart?
Good evening, commissioners. Um, I'm going to start my presentation here. If I need to get to my computer for something, bear with me. But it's a little bit more focused and straightforward than what we're, the last subject we were talking about. So tonight, uh, we're bringing before you, uh, to consider, uh, a proposal to make a, uh, very narrow amendment to the ag 20 zone zoning code, not the comp plan, um, to, uh, allow new cemeteries to be developed on properties that have existing churches on them. Next slide, please. Jeff. So our, uh, applicant or not application, our, um, planning number for this is CPZ 2024 00002. As I just mentioned, uh, the, the basic, uh, the basic request is, um, that there are a few properties that are in the ag 20 zone, which is a resource zone that have churches on them. And, uh, the Old Apostolic Lutheran Church of Battleground specifically has requested that, um, they be, uh, able to construct a cemetery on a property outside of Battleground, which right now under current code, they could not. The, uh, the state land use law allows this, but our code currently, um, in the, uh, resource zones, that use is a, is an X in the use standards is prohibited. And so this request would be to, uh, turn it to a conditional use. Just for a little bit of background and, and some of you may remember it was before I was a county employee, but about five years ago, this department brought forward a almost identical request, um, also from the OALC for, uh, the same idea in forest properties, FR fours, FR 40 properties, uh, that, um, was, uh, affected a property out in, um, Yakult area. And so this is the exact same type of, um, code change, uh, but just for the ag 20 zone. Um, the idea would be that, um, it would be limited, uh, both in the number of properties and in the temporal nature of that. It would only affect properties who already have churches on them. It wouldn't be forward looking and open ended. So it would, um, limit and conserve agricultural land that way. Next slide, please. Um, so again, uh, just specifically what this request would do in the, uh, title 40, 4210 010, uh, in the uses table. So that's dash one. Section nine, sub G, it would, um, change the, uh, the X for cemeteries, mausoleums, et cetera, in the ag 20 zone to a C for conditional use. And, uh, then that would automatically, if, if this request came forward for such a property, they would have to go through the full conditional use process through current planning. Um, and then additionally, what, what was done with the, uh, forestry amendment and what would be proposed here? Would the specific language would add a footnote down at the bottom of that table? And that footnote is, um, in the parentheses there. And that is the sum total of the code changes that would need to be done to the ag 20 zone to effectuate this change. Based on, uh, current available information to staff, this would, um, only affect four properties in the whole county that have churches on them, including the, uh, Battleground OALC church property. But the focus here is just the code language, not getting into the, the, the weeds, so to speak, on all those different properties. The, uh, code changes, as you guys have heard, um, many times before, there's several different reasons why staff can bring forward code changes that can respond to a changing conditions. It can be to correct an error like a Scrivener's error, or in this case, um, code changes can be brought forward to, uh, better implement, uh, comprehensive plan policies. So in this case, um, it's the, uh, goal, goals eight and 11 are the most applicable comprehensive plan policies that are tied to the, the state, um, GMA goals. Uh, and, uh, the goal eight is what focuses on natural resources and goal 11 focuses on citizen participation. In this case, uh, we, the staff report that is in your materials and, and we can get into more detail in the hearing if, if that's, uh, necessary or tonight, if you'd like to discuss, but the finding in a nutshell is that, um, this code would do two things for ag lands as a resource. It would reserve ag lands in that it would be a very narrow code amendment. So it could not be expanded to a wider set of ag lands. It's not all, um, uh, AG 20 properties. It's just these specific ones with churches in existence. And, um, then it would also, uh, looking at it from the other perspective, it would allow, um, these properties that are already developed with churches to have a very, um, uh, logical accessory or subordinate use, um, on them. And you know, they, if you already have a, a church on a property, that's a fairly permanent, long-term use on a piece of property. So, um, it's, it's not a, a great leap to think that allowing an accessory use for something like a cemetery, uh, is, is, uh, better effectuates that use of that property that's already developed with a church. So we've, we found that both those goals are satisfied. Um, and the, the citizen participation aspect is, is fairly straightforward. The, we are engaging with, um, constituents in the community. This was a, a request from, uh, congregation in the community and, um, we're doing what we have in, in our ability without, you know, we don't need to open up the comp plan. It's just a code, code change. It's not, it's not even a zone change. They're not asking for, uh, a change in the zone of the property. So it's just, uh, a very narrow change that allows this use to happen. And we've gone through, um, very similar steps that, uh, Susan just outlined as far as outreach. We'd public notice, done the SEPA, all those states are in your staff report. So, um, um, we, we have done all the, the general outreach that is, that is necessary for public participation on a, on a, uh, request like this. Um, next slide, please. So, uh, just, just to sum up, um, this, this proposal is very limited in, in scope and we feel that it, um, is responsive to a community need. The, uh, it's, it's legal, it's allowed. Um, I didn't go into it in the beginning of the presentation, but we've, we've found, uh, at least two other counties that, um, have similar resource zone allowances for cemeteries in both forest and mixed agricultural resource zones. So this would not be an outlier, uh, as far as, as a, a code change. Again, it's, it's almost identical to the FR 40 code change that was, um, gone through five years ago, and we have not, uh, had any major problems or pushback with that proposal. Again, it would, um, it would, uh, effectuate the, the agricultural use of the property, uh, or not. It wouldn't make it an agricultural use, but it's, these are properties that are already in use as a church. So it would just encourage a compatible use, um, on church property and prevent the need to go outside and find another site. So, uh, with that, uh, we, we recommend that this body recommend at the hearing on the 21st, recommend approval to the county council for this code change. Um, again, that the, we're to come before you in two weeks at a full hearing. And then we don't have a, uh, council time scheduled yet for this because it's a very busy time for the council. But we would bring it as quickly as possible if, if that was the recommendation. And so with that, next slide, and can answer any questions you may have?
Again, left or right? Yep. Uh, this is Jack Haroun. Okay. So, um, yeah. For the record, I'm totally in support of having, you know, um, a place to bury our departed. Um, but my questions really get down to the technicalities of, of this. Can this, i- is there a for-profit or nonprofit restriction on this code? Can it be operated as a, as a, as a for-profit enterprise?
That's a novel question to me. I would have to defer to Oliver and Jose if, if that question ever came up with the FR 40 proposal. But it's not in the code. Uh, cemeteries have, they would be associated with the church. Churches are, as we all know, very, you know, strictly nonprofit. So I would assume a cemetery operated in conjunction with a church would be nonprofit.
Right. So, okay. And this is, this is me being kind of devil's advocate of, of kind of punching holes in the code language to make sure that we're achieving what we want to achieve.
Sure.
So, um, cause it's, it's big business that people are big business. And so if you have a small church on a large parcel, that can become a de facto large, you know, scale, um, cemetery and, um, taking up ag land. And so I guess there's, the next question, is there any acreage limitation that we're putting on, um, on the size of that?
There is no acreage limitation in the code language, but, um, there are only four sites that this could ever apply to. And we didn't, again, as I said earlier, we didn't make this really about the sites, but they are no larger than 20 acres and they range from eight, eight acres, 15 acres, 20, so 20 acres.
And then I guess it's, my next question is how are you defining a church?
Uh, we.
I know how I think of a church, but well, as far as code language, because it could be a mosque. I have, there's a lot of people that have church in their home and they, they use their home as a church. And it could be even registered.
That's a good question. The way it was run five years ago and the way we've, uh, analyzed it now is very strictly what is, when you run the GIS report with assessor's records, what comes up as a property that's developed with a church? That's categorized that way. And that, so whatever, um, limitations that is, you know, through the assessor's office, that's what, where we got our, our criteria to, to screen these properties.
Well, I guess, I guess my, my question becomes in what? Like for a church to say that they are a church within the county, is there anything special that happened to get a, a church business license? Or declare that they're a church?
I'm not in that.
Planning Commissioner Haroun, no, uh, it wouldn't be the county that will be issuing a license for a church, for example. Most churches, as you know, operate as, uh, non-for-profit. And there's so many dominations out there that we don't regulate. And churches gets into, uh, very limited regulations. There are some laws out there on how you treat churches. So, uh, if anyone is having a church in their house, I don't anticipate that they will apply for a cemetery on their property. There was a bill, uh, a few years ago to allow in the rural area for folks to bury their loved one in their yard, but that didn't pass. So, uh, this is, will be limited to what is traditionally, uh, recognized as a church, whether it is apostolic, whether it's, uh, Lutheran. If you look around the Catholic church, for example, they don't have symmetry on their property. They have it somewhere else. Uh, so in this case, as Bat indicated, this would be limited to four churches that we know of, but it's not written specifically for them. Except that in this case, it is the old apostolic church that is making this request. So we looked around and said, there are only four in the ag zone. So we, it's written very similar to the one we passed in the forest zone. So, um, we don't define churches, those that run them, like the apostolic church, define them, whether they belong to a Lutheran or any other domination.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm, again, I'm completely in favor of the intent. I'm, my brother is an adorn, an ordained minister through the Church of Elvis. So he can legally marry people. Um, I'm looking at it from a, is, is the code bracketed enough to keep, what I would say, an opportunistic minded person to come in and say, I would like to start a large cemetery business. And, um, and that's, and then can you, and then I, I wasn't even sure, is it legal to discriminate against a new church that has property that wants to build in the future? Or is it like, is it, is there, is there, I guess this is almost more of a, um, um, counselor cook, you know, question. But like, is there a way to bracket stuff? So, so we're just meeting the intent and we're not opening up something that we weren't inspected. And then all of a sudden we lost 40 or 60 or 80 acres of ag land. Because the companies come in and they had the Church of Elvis set up and they've hired a for-profit company to run it. So that, that's my. That's just my concern.
This is, uh, Senior Deputy Prosecuting Attorney Christine Cook. You know, I don't think that the request was that complex and our understanding is that the similar code provision in the forest zone has not attracted the Church of Elvis. To my knowledge, it is constitutional to say you have to have done something by X date in order to qualify for Y entitlement. So I, I don't have problems with that. As to your other concerns, I don't know if any code writer anywhere can totally insulate a code from opportunistic and, um, possibly not entirely scrupulous folks. But this is, as I say, based on a model which we've had, which works. And I don't think we can answer any of the what ifs other, other than that.
And the only thing I'd add to that is that we, remember it would need to go through a full conditional use process, a whole nother hearing. And then cemeteries are highly regulated, both at the local and the state level. So no one would be sneaking in, uh, cemetery out on a back 40 somewhere.
Yes, sir. Sure. Good. Mine's working. Yeah. Brian Halbert here. Hey Bart.
Yeah.
Why couldn't it just be permitted as, as opposed to conditional use permit? I've worked through the conditional use permit process on behalf of some nonprofit organizations and it's a expensive, long process. Is there any way to streamline that and, um, make it permitted for the four properties that you're dealing with?
I'm not sure why five years ago we went with conditional, but it would allow a lot more citizen review and, and public. but it would allow a lot more citizen review and, and public participation.
As Commissioner Haroun pointed out, this is in the Ag zone. This is an anomaly in that sense. And as a matter of some caution, it might be good to see what's happening before it gets the green light. I think that's the, the answer.
Yeah, it's just a very expensive process for a small church. Just want to throw that out.
Depends on what all they're doing, you know? This is, this is not going to have the impact of, say, building a CVS somewhere.
This is Eldon, no questions.
Okay, great. Great presentation and thank you very much. And I don't, I remember that, the, the forest one. And I don't think we've had any problems with that, have we?
No.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. See you in two weeks.
Yeah, see you in two weeks. So any other comments from the planning commissioners before we take a little quick break here before the hearing? Hearing done, we will adjourn the work session and at 6:30 here, we'll get going with our hearing.